To order. Item on the work session is proposed subdivision ordinance rewrite, Mr. Frederick.
It's been awhile since I've got the whole hour of your time.
Well, you don't have that yet. You're right, it will be, continue to be awhile. But we'll give you.
Forty-nine minutes.
Yeah, fifty and a half minutes.
Hopefully, you recall, you all initiated a process to rewrite chapter fifty-four county code, which is otherwise known as the subdivision ordinance. This is the ordinance that console, that controls the procedures if you do want to subdivide your land or you want to develop it, it controls the procedures from plating through approval. And to some degree beyond that. And over the past several months, Supervisor White, Crozier, myself, along with the county attorney, we worked on several drafts of this ordinance. Got it to a, what we call it a workable state and gave it to the planning commission a couple of weeks ago. They held their public hearing on it, they were, it still blows my mind, there was not a single speaker in the, in the public for this ordinance.
Like the last time we did.
Some of us have a recollection of a very different kind of a meeting.
Yeah, yeah, some of us do. All kinds of perspectives up here.
That's why I stop where I stop.
I'm sorry, bear with me, this is a new computer and I haven't not used it yet. So the, the planning commission held their public hearing, very limited discussion on that, recommended approval to you all unanimously. And it's before you this evening. Mr. Chairman, I might defer to you as to how you'd like to move through this, under the planning commission likes to go section by section, it gives them a kind of a complete view of what's being proposed. But again, Mr. Chairman, I'll defer to you on how you'd like to begin.
One of the things that you might do, the, you prepared a, sort of a matrix of what, what changed, what didn't, and why. You, you might not necessarily go line by line through that, but talk a little bit about what we were trying to accomplish again, I think everybody has, has seen that material and heard the conversation. But I think that, as I understand it, the intended tonight is to make sure we're prepared to schedule a public hearing for, in front of this body. And so at least some time for questions, among other things, but I think sort of setting the stage that, you know, we, we, we were trying to sort of find a, a neutral position in terms of the today's ordinance versus the new one, we weren't trying to make it any more difficult to subdivide, we weren't trying to make it any easier. We were, there were some compliance matters, the state code had changed in a few cases that we needed to catch up with, some best practice items. And these kind of things, so we, you know, any sort of lead in comments there and then maybe talk a little bit about the matrix of, on some of the, the, the critical ones. One, one I think we should reserve a little bit of time to talk about is, is the issue of streets and roads, just so we, everybody understands the backstories and the context of that discussion. Because that was a big part of what we were, we are dealing with.
Right. So, one thing I, I found it particularly helpful to do when we began this is put together what we call a white paper, it's basically a comparison and an FAQ section. I know you've had a lot to read, I hope you had a chance to at least done through this, we've been keeping it updated with every iteration of the ordinance that's come out. And it really, it, building on the, the horror stories that I've heard from the past ordinance, that process of adoption. To try to answer some of the questions that I've heard about that, why that happened, why we're at this point, and then it gives a fairly high level review of, you know, the current ordinance and what's being proposed, as well as, you know, what has to be in there for state code, what is optional to be in there for state code. And which of those options we have incorporated into the ordinance. I will note, they're actually not, when you look at a high level, there's not that too many changes, the, the length and the word count, basically the same. We've expanded a lot of the definitions and, Mr. White, as you said, the, the road, the section that deals with road construction standards and approval is probably one that's changed significantly. We're also leaning on the planning commission a little more when it comes to approval of preliminary plaits, which we don't hardly get. But if and when we do, that would go to the planning commission instead of myself. And.
And by state code now, a preliminary plat is, can only be requested for something that's creating, I think, I think the number's fifty lots, is that correct?
Right, yeah, they, they strapped us a little, it's, we're limited to fifty or greater, so we have the option of, of requiring a preliminary plat if you're proposing a subdivision of fifty lots or more. We have employed that option, which is also in the current ordinance as well, so there's no change there. And the, probably the other section I'll touch on before we dive into this, we've really beefed up the section that regards to, or with regards, I should say, to, to bonding. These would be the, the bonds that developers posed for roads and utilities and things like that. And road maintenance agreements, we relied heavily on Tom for that, he's had more experience. We have a, a more complete requirement set for road maintenance agreements for private roads, so. The idea is everybody gets ownership in that road and hopefully the idea is that everybody kind of has a commitment to that road and everybody pitches in to maintain it.
Is that commitment in the deeds, covenants?
Yes.
One of the changes that we made that I think is, is appropriate is the definition of a family for family subdivision purposes, that, that's been narrowed by state code and, and, and we're, if I remember correctly, it's been awhile since we were working on this, but I think we basically adopted the state code as put forward, or did we narrow that a little bit more? I don't recall exactly, but it's, but there's now a definition of immediate family that is, that, that tries to bound that so that it can't be abused by. And there's also a requirement that it be held for five years and these kind of things, some of which is already in the ordinance, but it's, that, there still is a provision for family subdivisions, but it's, it's been tightened up a little bit, I think, and clarified frankly.
I, I would agree with that.
But to be compliant with state code, because state code is fairly prescriptive on what that needs to be. We don't have a lot of authority to manipulate it.
In all reality, just, just so we're aware, the family subdivisions, the reason the state code prescribed standards and requirements for those are for your more restricted localities that you don't necessarily get all the, the liberty to subdivide like you do in Orange. That was supposed, it was supposed to be an out for people that, that really need to give land to, you know, a family member as part of an estate or something like that. Kind of more or less circumvent all the normal requirements. Here, I think we maybe approved two of those since I've been here. You actually get more owner's requirements to do that here than just going a conventional subdivision, so we don't see them that often, but we, we have aligned this more to state code, to summarize. I think I'll stop there, Mr. Chairman, if you want to.
Yeah, maybe we should, should start talking about streets, roads, streets. And I, I, when we started the conversation at, at the subcommittee level, we, we, we found our, our discussion, first of all, recognizing issues that we have in the county now with roads that might have been built a hundred years ago to serve a farm or two or three farms. That over, over time are now trying to serve a handful of houses and the road itself hasn't been, not, not much has happened and you can't, they're too narrow for ambulances and all these kind of things. So we have a, we, we have an, an existing set of issues with respect to, to some of the roads. And, and what we found was that, that there, there's sort of a continuum from a, a, what we're calling here a driveway, which the county probably doesn't have a lot of reason to get involved with, a driveway being literally the, the access for a, a house or two coming off of a state road or other public road. To the other extreme, of course, is a road that, that gets dedicated and adopted into the V dot system and is therefore meeting the V dot standards and is maintained by V dot and is a true public road in the V dot system. But in between a driveway and a V dot road, we have about anything that your mind could conjure up in existence. And so the issue came, became, alright, we, we can't do much about today's situation. What can we do going forward to at least not make the problem any worse? And the, the way of addressing that was to take some of the existing standards we have for roads based on how much use they get and, and build on those a little bit. But the, the basic policy point of where this document exists today is that at the extremes you have the private road, the driveway as defined, which we don't say too much about in terms of how thick the gravel has to be or how long it has to be or those kind of things. At the other extreme, at a certain use level, it has to be to V dot standards, it has to become a V dot road, no, no fooling around. When you get to be, is it twelve lots or is it eleven, I've forgotten what the cutoff is, all of a sudden, eleven plus, is that how we said it?
Yep.
It's, it's V dot. And in between that, we left the possibility that you could build a private road. Being privately owned, privately maintained, privately designed within some standards. But you could only do that if you came in front of somebody and made them aware of that and, and, and had at least some check and balance that it was being done according to the agreed upon standard. At the moment, the way it's written, that, that body would be the planning commission. If you want to build a private road, under certain conditions, we'll say you can build a private road. But at a minimum, you gotta come to the planning commission and make your case in essence, and, and indicate that you are following the standards and designing the road appropriately. So that's probably from a policy standpoint, certainly with respect to streets. In, in my view, that's the biggest shift, if you will. Now, I will say, some localities don't even allow private roads to be constructed at all. And I believe state code doesn't require us to allow private roads. So while this sounds onerous and, and, and it's, it's intended to be a little bit onerous to, because of our history, it, it's probably a reasonable compromise, because there are situations when you have a small number of houses and, and little potential for any, any further development, that, that a private road could work. Or you have an active HOA that, that wants that responsibility and wants to control what's going on there with respect to snow removal and maintenance and everything else, speed limits, whatever there. There are reasons to have a private road, you live in a community with a private road and.
All of them are private.
And, yeah, and, and they, they want the control over the, those roads as opposed to having V dot. So that was the compromise that we struck.
Right, and, and to add on to that, we have many occurrences in the county where private roads currently exist. And there are parcels already divided at the end of those roads or have the potential that it would be extremely difficult for someone to bring the existing private road into the state system in order to accommodate two or three additional lots at the end of it. So we, we've worked really hard to accommodate existing conditions in the county. And at the same time, convert everything over to a standard from this point forward.
I believe you actually, the private road standard will be something less than V dot standards, correct?
Correct, significantly less at, at certain number of houses.
Right, and so when you talk about they need to come to the planning commission, I'm assuming that the proof they would bring to the planning commission would be something like a, an engineer's stamp.
Almost a site plan, that stamp, correct?
Yeah, like, I mean, you, you can, you can have environmental people come out and say that your septic plant is fine and they stamp it and you don't have to go, doesn't have to be approved by the health department, it's done by a professional engineer, so. Is that, are you envisioning that as how this would work?
I think so, because the, one of the problems we have in the county now is that in some cases that the, the road is actually part of the adjoining properties. There, there's a property line that goes down the middle of the road, and so the road isn't independently owned, other than it's part of each person's lot. This would, I think, in most cases.
A lot of V dot roads like that.
Well, yeah, in, in most cases, this would force the, the dedication of a right of way, the surveying and, and recording of that right of way. Such that, and the putting in place a maintenance agreement, either by an HOA or some, the county attorney actually has to approve to, has to form the HOA. So it, it, it is a much more formal procedure than we have today.
It's not just a set of road specs, it's a, it's a, it's a larger.
Right, and it would eventually bring the majority of roads into the compliance as people develop down the road.
Necessarily.
Right.
One question I have after reading all seventeen thousand five hundred and thirty-three words yesterday. On the private road standards, there was a fourteen foot vertical clearance and drainage, and that disappears. And I think we had the discussion with the vertical clearance last time we did this, in that you couldn't get your ambulance and fire truck down the road with some of these things, with trees hanging at eight feet. But that would, everything else I read.
And we don't carry a chainsaw in the ambulance.
Yeah, I mean, everything else I read, it, it all kind of follows along and it, it made sense. Doesn't try to tell you what you can and can't do, just how to do it, which is what it's supposed to do. So it all made sense and, and was pretty well defined. That, that was the only thing that I really found that is a thing that I had a question on.
I don't know why that was removed. We may have simply overlooked it, we can certainly add that back in. I think it's, I think it's a good standard, as I think you all do as well, to have some sort of.
You can put all the gravel you want out there, but there's no drainage. It's gonna just become a, a swamp with, with gravel on top.
Yeah, tell me about it. You're describing my driveway.
Are you talking about page six of eight?
Yes.
Yeah, right, right here in front, well, it was.
The fourteen, fourteen foot minimum roadway width.
Yeah, I mean, there, it's right there.
It's also on the new side, isn't it?
You're talking about the vertical clearance.
No, vertical clearance is not on the new side.
Yeah.
But the drainage, it does have a drainage.
Well, it's not in the synopsis, is it, is it, are you saying it's also out of the, actually?
I'm, I'm looking at the actual code, the language, under private road standards and it, Teal's right, it, I, I'm not sure where it went, but we, there's not a vertical dimension that's in the spec that I can see. There, there is with respect to width, ditch and, and the.
Oh, ditch, yeah, and, and the little drawings that showed all that, but.
Right.
What page is that on, Jim?
It's line, it starts at line twelve ninety-three. I, I don't have a page number for it.
Page thirty, huh?
Yes, sir. Thirty, thirty. It's floodplain.
Oh, well, I, I may have an older version, I don't which version I looked up, so.
I just had it now, I've lost it.
It's in that area.
It's page twenty-nine of thirty-nine on the attachment to the agenda.
Okay.
There's what it's labeled at the bottom, it's page thirty-two of the actual one dash WS two A.
Line twelve seventy-four.
But I do think.
Twenty, yeah, I mean, the sta, the, yeah, the standard, road standard starts on page twenty-eight on what I'm looking at here.
Yeah, I'm looking at the chart, there's a chart that shows the three or four lots served, right, exactly.
Yeah, lest anyone want to label this a rush, we've been working on this for.
A day or two.
I guess it's not quite two years yet, but it has to be.
Pushing it.
It has to be sneaking up on two years, so this was. But, yeah, that's a good catch, Teal.
Well, like I said, I, I read the whole thing and everything, based on what we had before, it, it, it all worked, it flowed, everything was good, that was the only thing I could find, and it wasn't until I got to the very end, it's like, wait a minute.
Well, clearly, in, in terms of existing conditions, one of the problems that we do have is height clearance.
Mine, mine's, well, in, I'm, I'm, I'm in this book here, I'm not in, I don't know if this is different from what we were given in our packet.
Yeah, we were up to about iteration eleven, so it's possible.
It's the agricultural subdivisions, it's page seventeen of thirty-nine, what I'm looking at here. And you, you put in a provision for agricultural subdivisions, which we didn't have before, correct, Josh?
We, we did up until twenty-fourteen and then it was pulled out.
Okay. So I, I'm glad to see it go back in. I am concerned about the six acres and, and wondering how you arrived in six acres and.
I think the new version, that's, that's been deleted.
Oh.
Not in the version I got.
See, that's, one of the current concerns I have is we have.
So many.
So many different versions.
That's, the reason is that started dating these, we should all be on the, the January eighth.
Yeah, they're, that's, that's the version that actually.
One eight eighteen, okay, yeah.
So what, what line numbers do I need to go to the?
Seven sixty.
Seven sixty.
Seven sixty.
It's on the screen, if it.
I know, I can't see that far. So you, you eliminated the six acres?
Correct.
Okay, sorry I brought it up, or I'm glad I brought it up.
Well, in several places, you talk about a residual of six acres.
That's for survey. What we're saying is that if you have a, if you're subdividing from an initial parcel that's six acres or less, you really need to survey everything noodily. And have a new complete plat of all of it. If it's a bigger piece of property, you don't necessarily have to, you know, if it's three hundred acres, you don't have to go resurvey the whole three hundred acres. And six was, I think that's, that's the number that's in there today, as I recall.
It's something the surveyors have gotten used to doing, and I couldn't find a good rationale to change it at this point, so we, we kept it where it is.
Well, the thing in some places, you say that if the residual doesn't have to have a Department of Health check on it, and that's, you know, if the residual is less than six acres.
Right, we kept that in.
And I'm not sure what that meant, or why.
You have, you have to have six acres in order to have land use, which.
And the what?
Land use.
Land use, yeah.
Okay, so that's a land use issue.
Right, that's it.
So if you're greater than six acres, I don't necessarily need, I mean, I can put it in land use, I don't need to have the Department of Health to.
Right, okay. And I, I guess we also beefed up the, the markings for quote, non-buildable lots. I think there's, there's certifications that the, the, the surveyors and, and others, engineers have to put on the plaits, those get recorded. There's, there's notices and notes about, you know, being non-buildable and all those kind of things. So I think that, that was a, a, a sort of mechanical, but, but I, I think an important thing to do is to say, you know, there are things out there that you might call a lot, but it's not a buildable lot. Hasn't gone through all the steps. There is a possibility you could convert it to a buildable lot, but then you have to comply with all the provisions of the subdivision ordinance.
I, I think more importantly too, and based on my experience, there's been agricultural subdivisions in this county for dating back to the seventies, best I can tell. And it's usually a tiny little bit at the bottom, you know, this is not approved as a building lot, this is an ag division. We actually added a section here that they have to state that in the deeds, so there's really no mistaking, you know, what you're buying or what you're creating, it's, it's there, it's laid out, it's clear.
When it's created, it is very deliberate, very, very deliberate and very honest. I've got a question on line twelve ninety-three under the latest one, and it's just, we may have shot ourselves in the foot with this one because of FEMA updating their.
Floodplain maps?
Yes. I don't know, I just, I, I don't know if this is going to have an effect or not, but it does concern me. Because we went from having very, very, very little floodplain in the county to fairly substantial area.
I bought some hip waders since it came out, yeah.
So I, I don't know if this is something.
I think I bought a bug.
Right, it's something that we're going to have to.
I need a beer.
Do you have your captain's license? We may need to come back at a later time and address this once they've finished flushing out what are the flood zones and everything, because there's going to be, with this expansion, there's going to need to be exceptions to that. Based on a lot of these properties.
Well, yeah, my driveway is. It will never be permanently fixed because it's feet from a good sized stream and, the stream gets up and it's gonna wash the driveway out.
You've heard of White's Ferry over in Maryland, well, we now have White's Ferry in Orange.
White's Ferry, White's Ford.
It's a moat.
Right, exactly, so I, I just, I want to make sure that, that is on our radar for at some point, once FEMA finishes.
Sort of a, maybe off the wall question, why are we naming roads and subdivisions? You got ten homes or more than ten?
The reason is, if you want to, if it's, if you have more than two houses on a road, it has to be named a road.
Actually, if you.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know, I think if you have two houses on a road.
Well, yeah, and that's what I'm, I'm sorry, if you have two houses.
Two or more, I think.
It has to be.
So that's been, naming the road, okay, what about the subdivision?
I will just step back on the subdivision and not get involved in that one, because I have my own personal views on that, but.
I didn't understand the question.
We, subdivisions have to be named.
Anything over ten, ten houses.
I, I don't know where that came from, it's been in there as long as I can remember, that, i- i- is there, is there a logic?
I could see that as being a, I could see that as being a positive thing, I mean, in terms of letting, letting the emergency responders, you gotta know where it is.
One way that does help, and just to be clear, the, the, the name of a subdivision, you know, if you have like a Wilderness Shores, for example, you also have, you know, division of the land of James Crozier. That also counts as a title. But when this becomes really affected too, for Lake of the Woods, for example, if you didn't know where Lake of the Woods was and you were in a dispatch center.
You're in the wrong county.
And, yeah, and you, you need to search, you know, something that comes up, you can type Lake of the Woods in, and that's gonna, that actually gets put in the parcel record data under the ownership block. So you can actually query that and see a Lake of the Woods, and then you at least have some idea where that property is. So it's, it's a location service as much as it is a name.
And a lot of it, quite honestly, is outdated. It comes from back in the days when fire trucks had rolodexes in them. That the companies actually, it made it much easier if they were running, say, their second or third due area. Roll to it and you say, okay, it's in Burke Center. You know, it, it made it a lot easier. With today's technology, I think it's a waste, but.
Well, I don't know, at two o'clock in the morning, when everybody's trying to wake up, I, I think if you, if you, the, the, the more you simplify it, the better. I mean, it is true, we've got, we've got ways, but it's.
Every, every ten houses or eleven houses, you've got a subdivision, I'm not sure that, that isn't gonna fall right into the noise because of the, of the small location. If you've got a big subdivision, everybody's aware of it.
I, I think one of the other reasonings for it is so that you don't get somebody come in and say, I want to call this Wilderness Shores, and you already have a Wilderness Shores.
The duplication of it.
Right, because it used to be.
Which really did confuse people.
Right, because it used to be that you not only had duplication of streets, but you actually had duplication of street numbers. And, uh. You know, so.
I mean, I, I, I'm not, you know, just, it was sort of more curious as to why, rather than having any particular objection to it.
Did we change the number ten, or is it ten in the current version? I, I've sort of forgotten all these.
No, the, um, so. Line nine eighty-seven, if you're in the one eight eighteen version.
I am.
The current ordinance actually stipulates that all subdivisions have to be named.
Oh, that's, okay, that's.
And we.
So the ten is new, that's right.
My, my approach here was to coordinate the number of lots with the public road requirement. So actually, line nine eighty-nine, that should actually read eleven or more lots. Because eleven more lots is when the public road requirement kicks in. Again, the idea is if you're putting in a, a large enough development, you have a public road going in. You should probably give that its own name, just as a, a means of just.
So that should be eleven and certain.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I looked up the county's street naming ordinance just to make sure it was two more, and I'd like to read this to you. County administrators authorized to assign names to any unnamed road, public or private, in the county which provides access to two or more occupied buildings with telephones.
Is that cell phones or, or line?
It just says with telephones.
Might want to update that.
Nineteen eighty-seven. So I haven't been checking whether they have telephones.
It would have been appropriate for eighty-seven.
Guess if you didn't have a telephone.
Well, that, that's when the, I mean, nine one one came in, uh, wasn't even in place in eighty-seven, so this was what they were. That's why they were tying it to telephone.
I had another comment, uh, on the preliminary plat, you give the towns a chance to, uh, uh, comment. We don't give Lake of the Woods or any other homeowners a chance to comment on the preliminary plats. If you got within two miles. It's not approval, it's just comment.
What was your question?
I'm sorry, I was interrupting him.
Oh, the que, the question was, uh, you say the towns, uh, give the towns an opportunity to comment on any, on any preliminary plat that's, uh, within two miles of the town. And I'm saying, you're looking, and I'm just saying why you didn't put, uh, Lake of the Woods.
This is, this is.
Are you sorry you asked for it to repeat?
Yes.
Just, just a question.
Because Lake of the Woods is not a town.
For, for a number of reasons, actually. One, Lake of the Woods is not a town.
I know that.
Um, the odds of them having any new streets in the lake.
Well, it, it's, yeah, it, it's not, it's.
Within two miles.
Right, but, so, it's not going to affect the lake from being able to name that many new streets in the future. Um, and. The lake is part of the county.
I understand.
As far as planning and zoning goes.
They're part of the county.
They're part of the county. The towns are not.
Understand.
They have separate, senseless addressing and street naming systems.
Okay. It was, it was saying, anything within two miles of the thing, you have a chance to comment on, and I suspect that. That if there's something within two miles of Lake of the Woods, they would have a chance to comment on, on some element of the, of the preliminary plat.
Well, I, 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 I think that the genesis may be back in time, and still here now, the towns can annex. And they also may be obligate, are looking to provide services, infrastructure, water sewer service, to these subdivisions, and so they, they, they want to be sure. That they, you know, this ordinance at least sets up the, the ability for them to look at it. They can't change it because it's under the county subdivision.
No, I, as I say, that wasn't, uh, it wasn't, I, I noticed it didn't say approval, it just said comment.
I, I, I think it has more from an annexation, infrastructure. Is, if Lake of the Woods is going to start providing infrastructure to the D W O P area, we, we can probably.
No, 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 no.
And I.
I'm ready to go there.
Never mind.
I, I think under the present, uh, general managers, uh, time period, we would definitely get comment whether we wanted or not anyway.
Whether we said anything in our provision?
Yes.
I'm sure we're, you're right. Okay. If a preliminary plat comes up, I'll let Phil know.
As, as long as it's not over in my section, just let that one slide on through. Sure, Mr. Frank, I had to take advantage of that one, so I.
There actually is a requirement, and I was, I was looking to see how we handle it, uh. That talks to the expansion of, uh. Public water systems, uh, can't find that exact why.
There's a couple of places that you say that, uh, if you're in, in the vicinity of RSA, that they need to be, uh, provide comment. So that, that sort of picks up on, on what you were saying about, uh, the infrastructure, the towns that provide, uh.
Right.
Uh, water or sewer.
Well, it, it, it starts at line sixteen twenty-seven, I did find it, the Code of Virginia cites a section. For any subdivision of land that abuts or adjoins a public water end or sewer system, the main development of resulting lot should be required to connect, required to connect. To, and utilize the public utilities. If deemed available by the utility provider. So that's really the connection to that, that two miles, is that they have to, uh. Basically, I guess, take a, take an active denial role that says, you, uh.
Okay.
We, we don't have capacity for you, or whatever.
That was, uh, yeah, that was one of those things, I was, uh, I noticed that you had RSA doing a couple of places, so. I was gonna ask the question at Thursday's board meeting, is that what are your standards for commenting on these?
Exactly.
As long as we're in this section, this was a, another. Considerable change, uh, starting on line fifteen eighty. If you recall, right now, we have what are called hydrogeologic testing requirements. I think when those originally put in the ordinance, they've been in there for probably thirty years, it started out at fifteen lots was the threshold. Basically, you had to go out and pre-test to make sure you had adequate quantity and quality of groundwater. Um, then that was, I think, knocked down to eight lots, and then now it's up to the current thirteen. This proposes it to be at twenty, but the change is that rather than us reviewing the hydrogeologic proposal. We require a certified geologist to basically state the same, that they have adequate quantity and quality.
Much, much like we do with engineers for site plans and surveyors for this, I mean, it's a, let, let the experts who have the. Carry the professional liability license and insurance, uh, to be the ones to guide us on that. Okay, any other questions, comments, concerns?
Questions as to why, rather than.
Another topic of discuss, I'm sorry, Jim.
Oh, no, I was gonna say, the answer why on most of it is because state code says we will. We, we found that to be a very common denominator on many things that we wanted to. Change or do away with. Our fine legal counsel piped up on, on those occasions.
While, while you're looking, Lee, another area that, uh, came up over the past year or so, quite a few times, was a situation where, uh. In, in many cases, going back fifty, sixty or more years, uh, VDOT would move a road. And it would, uh, end up not being along property lines any longer, it would bisect a road or. Create a, a little segment of a road in some cases, and these kind of things, and it's been a, uh. There, there are more occurrences of that than you might think. Uh, when Monrovia Road was moved, someone told me not long ago that there were. Somewhere between seventy-five and a hundred properties that were affected to the point where they. Before the road was moved, they, they might start out with ten acres, after the road was moved, they might have six, uh, and. You know, two on the other side of the road, all of a sudden, and these kind of things, and so, uh, we, we tried to set out a process for, uh. Dealing with that and allowing people to sort of clean that up, uh, not, not by our insistence so much as, uh. If, if in a case where a, a fragment of road exists on, on the other side of where you live, all of a sudden. And you could convince your neighbor to buy it, you ought to be able to do that without a great big hassle. Because in some cases, it's, you know, a, a tenth of an acre, or, you know, three tenths of an acre, or things like that, that are fragmented. And, uh, I think it's in everyone's best interest to allow that to be consolidated under, uh, private motivation to do so. That's, that's now allowed without the hassle factor being very high, so.
I noticed in one spot that we talked about corner lots, with the two frontages, that the, if the shorter frontage needs to be the front of the lot, is there a rationale behind that?
I think this is a shorter one has to meet the, the frontage requirement.
But, um, that just mirrors the zoning ordinance.
Okay, the zoning ordinance says that, right, the shorter one is the front.
Doesn't hurt to term any setbacks, not necessarily the access.
When you talk about, uh, residual lots may not have, may not contain multiple parts, what we mean by that.
If you, if you have a situation, let's just hypothetically, if you have a rectangle piece of land, you cut out a chunk in the middle, so that both ends are separate pieces. Realistically, what you've done, instead of creating one, you've actually made three, because that residue would be two pieces.
Okay.
So it's, it's a way.
I can't have the same lot number on two pieces that aren't connected.
Right.
All right. Mostly just. Okay. I guess we could add an agenda item tonight if we want to, the calendar item to schedule a public hearing.
Yes, sir.
Once we get to, to our meeting, if everyone is.
You can do it now.
Well, I guess, we, we are in a meeting now, aren't we?
Yeah.
Work session is a meeting, sure. As you wish, whatever. Can you give us our, our potential dates, Allison, coming up?
You have two calendar items on your regular meeting agenda this evening. One is for an S U P for a telecommunications tower, and then one is for zoning text amendment for accessory apartments, and we have proposed both of those for April tenth. And if it's, it's your desire to do so, we could add this one as a third public hearing that evening, or it could.
I'm not sure I would do that, 'cause we, I'm not, we could have little or no response, or, or there might be a lot of interest in this, so we probably should. Probably should schedule it by itself, I would think.
Next meeting will be the twenty-fourth.
Of April.
Of April, I don't, we don't have anything right now.
Not, not to my knowledge.
Okay.
I would so move.
Okay, there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Josh.
Thank you.
It was, it was a journey, but we're.
It, it's still been oddly painless so far, I'm, I'm, I feel like I'm gonna pay for this in the future some.
Thou should not hold thy breast.
When you did this, was there any, uh, thoughts given to. Expected or proposed zoning ordinance changes?
There are a few things that popped up that are going to, we, we need to go back into the zoning ordinance and do some text amendments and.
Okay, but this will, this will still come, uh, we're not gonna find conflicts between the zoning ordinance and this one. We hope.
We hope, I hope we found. There were some, or there are some, as we sit here today.
It'll probably be less after this.
What's that?
It'll probably be less after this than we have now.
I, I think that's, at least less.
Okay, all right.
Mr. White decided, uh, decided we'd have a subcommittee, Peter, to, to continue.
That's a different subcommittee, young man. All right.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Call the meeting to order, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, any changes or additions to the agenda?
So she go through.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Special presentations and appearances, service awards, Mr. David.
Yes, sir, we have, uh, two awards, uh, one, uh, is Ms. Fleming, Rita Fleming, from Social Services, who. Was, weren't prepared and didn't have her on the last agenda, she had agreed to come back today, she's not here just yet. So we can go on with our other award recipient. So, Mr. Chairman, if you can come down here and. No, it's all right.
I see a smiling face, is that a?
A familiar one. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'll ask Susan Turner to come forward, she's a senior administrative assistant in our county administrator's office. And is receiving her five-year serious service award.
So who's taking the picture? Okay, young.
Congratulations and thank you.
And, uh, with Ms. Fleming, we'll work through that, and I had offered to go down there and present that on behalf of the board, so we'll, we'll get that going. We had two other recipients that were unable to attend today, Amy Tu, a library accounting technician, a five-year service award, and Walter Bryant. Uh, Orange County Office on Youth Facilitator, a five-year service award.
Okay. All right, business spotlight, Ms. Patera.
Yes, sir.
Tell us about your operation and how it's going.
I would love to tell you about our operation, thank you for inviting me here, I'm happy to be here and to tell you a little bit about what we do. Uh, first of all, I'll tell you about our first, our two goals that we have in mind literally every single day when we're, uh, working on the farm. One is to, uh, be a service to the public, and I'll tell you a little bit about how we do that. And the second thing that we have in our mind is to keep the farm in the family, uh, which I hope that every farm owner is working hard to do. Uh, and the way that we do that, keep the farm in the family and provide good service for the public, uh, is kind of multifaceted, so. Um, I'll kind of go from our, uh, the, how do you describe it, the, the least income producing to the most income producing. So we have a, uh, operation where we have horses who board on our farm, not very many, just a few, just to keep some income coming in. And, um, just to be of service to those who enjoy it. Right now, we have two field boarders and they're beautiful horses in the field. Um, we also are providing a hunt club for men and women who enjoy coming to the country and, um, hunting. A lot, most of them are whitetail deer hunters, a couple of them are also turkey hunters, so the season expands depending upon the, the, what they're hunting. And those folks are coming from Washington DC, they're coming from Richmond, uh, really all over the state, and one person up from Pennsylvania. So they're really coming to the county to have an experience outdoors, uh, and they're staying with us typically, uh, in our Airbnb slash bridal suite guest house. Uh, and they are.
A hunter in a bridal suite, that, I like that, that's, that's a terrific image.
It's multifaceted, uh, and they are, so they're spending the night here typically, and they're also, um, eating out and spending money within the community. Um, and they're also, they're not only enjoying hunting, but they're also patrolling our woods, which is nice, so that we don't have any coaching problems. Well, we've had a few issues, but nothing major. We also provide in the, the summer, we have a few weeks of camps for children, starting with a three and four-year-old camp in the morning. Uh, and then it goes up to fourth grade, uh, in mornings and then afternoons, and that is a lot of fun, it is very busy those few weeks on the farm. And we're very tired at the end of each day, but we have a lot of fun, nature camp, uh, art camp, horse, like introduction to horse camp. Um, just a variety of different things. One of our most popular camp is Star Wars camp. And this is, the kids are coming together and they are choosing a script with our counselors about just sort of a, their own section of a Star Wars movie, sort of from different. My boys probably could tell you better than I could, but they do. And then we film them, and then we have these wonderful creative high school students who edit what they have filmed. And then they come away at the end of the, uh, week with a DVD that shows this Star Wars movie. So it's a lot of fun. Um, and in addition to camps, we host weddings on our farm, which is the breadwinner for sure. breadwinner for sure. We are busy April, May, June, September, October, and the very early parts of November. Our barn is a barn, so it is difficult to heat and cool. We don't heat and cool. But on those milder seasons, we have a lot of fun. We host about 15 events a year. And we are a family, so we're trying not to do too many. We'd like to increase as we, as we, the kids get older. But right now, we're trying to keep it so that we all are sane at the end of the day. And we also are very concerned about our grounds. And we want to make sure that it looks as fresh and beautiful and clean as it will for every single wedding, and it doesn't look trampled upon and worn out. So those are our strategies for giving product to the community and to the public, and also keeping our farm in the family. I'd love to field any questions. There's lots more going on besides those things, but...
How many acres do you have?
We have, just shy of 300. 100 open land. We do, another thing we do is cut hay and seasonally. We have a guy come in to do it for us. So it's another product for the public. And then 200, about 200 in woods. So it provides a great, great landscape for hunting.
And also, you've hosted some community events in the past. I know the Farm Bureau had their annual dinner meeting there a couple of years ago.
Yep. That's right. We do a lot of, we are...
Chamber, yeah.
The Chamber as well. And we've done, my husband and I are on Committee for Young Life, which is a wonderful ministry for high school and middle school students. And so we host high school kids on our farm a lot, which is a lot of fun. We play volleyball or have a bonfire, or just run around, play games and things like that. So it's a lot of fun to serve the community.
Okay.
When you're not saving colleges.
Well, that too, yeah. That's right. That was a big accomplishment. It doesn't have anything to do with the farm, but it definitely kept me busy for a good chunk of 2015.
You did a good job.
Thank you. It was, it was quite an honor to do that. And it's an honor to run this business in the town where I grew up. And I love being able to give back to the community in that way. So I do have business cards. You guys can find us on the internet. I don't have a brochure because that's not how people find us. But the internet work is really how we do everything. So.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're headed to soccer practice, so I'd love to hear, stay and listen. But I'll actually get your meeting down at the 4H with the 4Hers. So I'll see you down there if you've got more questions.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
New business, authorization of budget ads and tax rates. Mr. David.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm going to allow Allison to walk you all through this, since she's the one that handles the placement of the ads and making sure all the ayes are dotted.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, in front of you is a memo requesting your authorization to send the budget and tax rate advertisements to the local newspaper, the Orange Review, for publication in accordance with the Code of Virginia. In your memo, we did indicate that no changes had been made since Brian's budget presentation was made on February 27th. And that was accurate at the time that this memo was drafted. However, at the time of your budget work session last Tuesday, March 6th, if you'll recall, there were changes made to some of the school funds, Head Start, textbook, cafeteria funds.
Up, updated information for that, right?
Yes. They were updated to reflect the information provided by Dr. Tanner and the CFO. So those are the only changes that have been made. And as Brian reminded me, those funds are specific for certain expenditures within the school's budget. So other than those changes from the March 6th work session, we are requesting approval to advertise the budget with those changes, and then the tax rates with no changes as, you know, as they were adopted last, last year.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, Jim.
Advertise away.
One footnote on that. It will be on that third. And then the following week's meeting on the 10th will be the first opportunity you all could adopt the budget. I received an announcement from Governor Northam's office that he is calling a special session on April 11th to bring the two, everybody back to do the budget. So that's the day after your, that's a Wednesday, so that's the day after your meeting. So I think at this point in time, until we know it shakes out with the state revenue, particularly with regard to schools, this budget, our budget won't be in a position for you all to adopt on the 10th. So we may just pass that by. We, I think we can come back the following week if we have enough information on that Tuesday, which is the intervening day, or we could wait till the 24th. But the problem with the 24th is that the contracts for the schools have to be out, I think, by May 1st or thereabouts. So just, I think flexibility will be the B word of the day for us.
Do we need to make that schedule change or announcement in any way that, for the public, or is it...
I think, I see our reporter from the Orange Review, but I can work to make sure that we at least have it in the thing. We can, I think we could probably do an all-users type email, at least a notice that until the General Assembly has taken action on their biennial budget, this board won't be in a position to take action on its budget. And we can get that out. It wouldn't be a great extent of information, other than waiting on the state.
Okay. Well, I just think we should, where possible, we should keep...
Could you repeat that for us?
No.
No, no, that's...
Keep the public updated and informed of schedule changes like that.
I'm glad he pointed out the reporter from the Orange Review was here, because I hadn't seen him yet. It's been so long since he's been here, he doesn't realize that the press has the signed CD over here.
Yeah, even having an agenda and everything else.
Yeah, you have the agenda.
Obviously, I'm not an area. You are already going to...
I didn't recognize you with the glasses on. I looked a little different.
I'm looking for his, for his press credentials.
The news should not be news, Craig.
But short is that I think we're going to wait in a holding pattern until the General Assembly's taken action. The governor has...
I don't mean to open up a can of worms we can't do anything about, but I just wonder whose brilliant idea it was to wait until April 11th to come back in. Is something going to change? Is the atmosphere going to change between now and April 11th that's going to make it possible for them?
I think it's just that the time is running out for them, because they have to have something in place by July 1st, so.
Well, but why don't they just stay in session and adopt a budget, is my point. It's just...
April 11th is usually the veto override session. I think, I'm thinking it's about timed right. So if they come back and do the budget, then I think another two or three week clock ticks for the veto session. As you all know probably from press accounts, it's the Medicaid funding, the House has supported, the Senate hasn't. And I think the House is using those freed up local, state dollars to then use for other purposes. And so I think that, so...
It just seems unfortunate to me that they didn't just stay down there and take care of the problem. It's not going to...
Get their work done.
The differences between the two or three or four different sides is not going to really change between now and April 11th, so.
Okay. Now, old business, Department Director of Constitutional Officers reports. Are you going to do an introduction, or you want me to call you and start?
You can go call Lori up.
Okay. Lori.
Hello. Hi. Good evening, guys and ladies and everyone. I've got a quick memo, and I wanted to make you aware of a change we would like to make at the visitor's center regarding our hours of operation and when we will be there. We have a wonderful group of volunteers. They are quickly dwindling. And so in turn, we have to do the best we can to have the most coverage. So we're open when we need to be. Going through some data from last year when it came to visitor traffic, I noticed some, obviously some trends as to when are we more, you know, when do we have higher traffic days versus other days if we were to limit our hours or change our hours in some way. Looks like Tuesdays are a good day where our hours could be shortened. So that was one way to help kind of drop down on the amount of volunteers I need, because I typically need during our normal operating hours, not during holiday hours, two volunteers a day. That's a lot of people you can imagine during a month when we're open seven days a week over there. And that's all volunteers. So by limiting Tuesdays' hours, we're looking at changing Sundays and Tuesdays from nine to five, which is what they currently have been, 11 to three. So that only leaves me one volunteer needed to cover those shifts. Sundays are not a high-traffic day, believe it or not. But we still want to be there and be available, because people are usually off and might be out running around. Then our normal business hours, otherwise, were nine to five, Monday through Saturday. I'd like to make those hours 10 to four. And that's what we were going to do. Take an hour off the front end when there's usually no one coming through the doors. Take an hour off the back end when, through my volunteers and through a meeting I had with them, they said they really don't see many people after four o'clock. If someone walks in the door, they'll be happy to stay and help them. But otherwise, and that also gets my volunteers who are aged out of there before it gets dark. I want them to get home safely. And even like as summer hours come into play, it's not so much of an issue. So I want to make you aware of that. This does not change our status for a certified visitor's center. Our only requirement to stay within that status, which we currently are in, is we're open five days a week. And we're already going above and beyond that because we're open seven days a week. So just wanted to make you all aware that we were making these changes to help better efficiently use my volunteers that are available, and that we can actually have an easier time getting those shifts covered. Any questions?
The production of volunteers, is that mostly due to aging out?
Yeah. And we're having trouble getting them coming in from younger ages. And that's something I'm definitely trying to creatively work on in maybe pulling from some of our nonprofits or some of our local organizations that are very active, who might be willing to possibly potentially give us some hours over there for lots of reasons.
What do they normally have? Three-hour shifts or six-hours?
Well, they were, they were doing four-hour shifts, so I'm going to make it three hours. And some of our volunteers like to just take the whole day. So some of them, it's going to help me also, because they'll take the whole shift. And now it's only a six-hour shift versus an eight-hour shift. Any other questions?
Do you see any trends? At one point, I recall that we had a report, some information that the actual traffic in the visitor's center was beginning to taper off a little bit. I mean, it was seasonal, obviously, but it was tapering down generally as the internet traffic and so forth was going up. Are you, are you seeing any trends like that yet?
I haven't been able to crunch all my numbers personally for our visitor's center, because I'm still gaining all that information. Because it's all, it's all manual. I am physically dropping down this information off of visitor sheets that are assigned in every day. And I'm physically numbering them and putting them on spreadsheets. So as we get further along, I'll be able to give you better information. But the general trend that I'm hearing from all my other tourism-related businesses and communities in the region is that is the case. Obviously, all this information is available online nowadays. So you have these two segments of communities. You have your younger generations that are very comfortable with the mobile systems. They're not, they're not walking into visitor centers. They can get everything they need from their car and from their phone. And they don't have to go anywhere. But then we have our aging community that's just also very much high travelers. And they're now retired and they're out enjoying life. They want to talk to a human. They want to get recommendations from a human. So we're kind of walking both sides right now of the situation. So we need to have a physical location so people can feel, you know, taken care of and able to be directed. But we also want to be as mobile as possible too. So yes, it is definitely a trend across from everybody I've spoken to.
Is there anything you could do to make the visitor's center attraction under its own right?
Well, it is.
I understand.
Because it's a historical train station. So we get a lot of people just coming in there wanting more information about the train station. Yeah.
Get Amtrak to stop there.
Yeah.
I didn't say it.
I tried, yeah.
I know, I know.
That would be wonderful. We would love that. But so I just want to make everyone aware, you are all more than welcome to put in a shift at the train station. I'll be happy to put you down. We're always looking for openings. And I'll be happy to add you to my volunteer list for substitutes.
You might have to have talk.
She already asked me this.
We'll take the five to seven shift.
Five to seven shifts?
On Tuesdays.
Okay, yeah, we'll take that. So if you're ever interested, please let me know. But I just want to make you guys aware, and I think this is going to hopefully help a lot.
How long of a training session do you have?
Oh, you're okay. Don't worry. I think you'll pretty much know what to do.
Okay. We're going to have your shift decide here.
Lori, just want...
Yes.
Just share with the board how well this was received from the...
Yes, I actually had a meeting with, there was 21 of my volunteers that were able to make it a couple, about three weeks ago, two weeks ago. And we went over all sorts of things. But this was, I brought this up to them, because I really didn't know how they would receive it. And they actually were all very, very excited, very much on board, thought it was great, better use of time. They were much happier. The ladies and gentlemen that don't want to put in longer shifts, they thought that was a much better timing for them. So I have, pretty much the majority of my volunteer segment is completely on board with this, and they think it's a wonderful change. So, and a lot of them have been there for many, many years. So they don't feel like it's going to be a problem.
And you'll be continuing the volunteer lunch, I presume?
Yes.
Because I know that's something that they all seem to...
Yes.
Really enjoy.
Yeah, yeah. And we've got a very special group of people. I mean, I would have to brag that we probably, I haven't gotten confirmation, but we are one of the only left that are fully, fully managed by volunteers. So it's very rare. So you guys should feel proud. We've got a great group over there being our ambassadors for the county. Any other questions?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Okay. Semi-annual library report. Katie.
If we could be here. We are rounding the last finished segment of the main library refresh. I know you all are going to dinner down with the extension folks. So if you go in the library door, you can walk through and take a look at what all is different. We had a few objectives for it. Overall, was to make it look fresher. We wanted to maintain a separate identity for the children's space. We wanted to get more public seating and more different types of seating. People of different ages definitely have different preferences there. More power outlets for people to bring their own devices. Increase the feeling of spaciousness as much as we were able to do without making our building larger. And improve our ability to serve those with disabilities. I think we, we've met most of those at least partially. We have a few things left to do. We're going to install some scanning equipment in the back reference area that's been ordered but not yet received. And then there's some smaller things we weren't able to do just because we ran out of money. We did not get all of the funding we requested to do this. So we actually got farther than I thought we would with what we, what we had. So the main remaining expense for us is going to be some type of replacement flooring. Y'all will see that in 2020. Our carpet was put in in 2005, and it is filthy. It's never been cleaned, and it's gross. At some point, we will, we will get a new carpet. It's so poorly attached to the floor that they're afraid to clean it because the squares move everywhere, because the glue didn't really take. And they came back and re-glued it five times, and it still didn't stick. And it was kind of all in all, just not a good installation experience. The kids' section we're really happy with, we were able to get some nice bright colors in there, change the positioning of the furniture so that you can see into it, and there's not really a lot of visual blocks. That was a large part of what we did, was either get rid of furniture that was too big, too tall, or otherwise block the view. And that does make it, make it feel a little more open. We got a lot of help from Public Works on our various projects. They helped us hire... We got a lot of help from Public Works on our various projects, they helped us hire electricians and painters and different people that we needed to get our work done. Um, and Erin Kane actually came up with the idea for us to put in the high-low laptop counter and booth arrangement. And it has been the most popular thing, every day there are people. Sitting in, in those booths that really like the, the feeling that those have and. Uh, our ability to add power to almost all of the tables in the libraries is huge. We have people now who spend four or five hours there that never did before. Mostly because there were no outlets. We had literally zero outlets in the back third of the building. None in the walls, none anywhere, they couldn't plug in their vacuum cleaners. Um, so. Over the past five years, I've spent a fair amount of money in dribs and drabs adding electrical outlets everywhere I could figure out how to put them. Um, to address that. Um, statistics. Um, holds are up seven percent. I think that's good and also bad, because it means that people are having to wait for what they want and they're not able to get it immediately, cause we either don't have enough of it or. Um, it's at the wrong location. Um, digital loans are up seven percent. We're seeing a decrease in loaning of physical books and an increase in loaning of digital items. Um, somewhat similar to what Lori was talking about with. The people coming to the physical location versus using the digital tools, uh, we're seeing the same sort of dichotomy in our line of work too. Um, meeting room usage is up nineteen percent. And we finally can measure our wifi, in the first six months of the year, we had twenty-three thousand seven hundred and eighty-nine wifi users. Which is actually higher than I thought it would be, I knew that there were a lot of them, but.
Two-thirds of the county.
Yeah. Lot of wifi, um, piece, physical computers that we own and let people use, that usage is down twenty-six percent. But it's two sides of the coin, they don't need our computer because they have a smartphone. And they bring it in and use our wifi, um. We, uh, recently added a subscription to the New York Times that can be used from home. Um, I'm hoping that that will get good usage. It's definitely a nice resource, we were never able to get the physical New York Times delivered to us, we just couldn't arrange a carrier for it. We've many times been asked for it, um, so now we have it, people can read it on their phone. Um, obviously on our library computer terminals too. Um, we are working on improving collection currency in our nonfiction books. We had done some statistical analysis prior to, not this year's budget, but the year before. And noticed that we had, at Maine anyway, about forty percent of our books were more than twenty years old. As we live in the age of immediacy and everybody expects everything to be available immediately, and I'm just gonna stream it or download it. A twenty-year-old book doesn't cut it, it's, it's not relevant and it's not useful, so. We're both working on removing the most egregious things that are, are on the shelves and trying to buy new things within the amount of money that we have to work with. And that hopefully will be an ongoing five-year project, and it'll take a little time to chip away at it. Takes a lot of time to carefully and thoughtfully select things, it takes time to catalog them and get them out there, it takes time to put all the stickers and labels on them. So you don't wanna try to bite off too much of it at once, it's better to do it steadily over a, over a period of time. And then I think we will be able to make a difference there, um. The next thing that we have coming up, we are due to revise our long-range plan, so. We will have a long-range plan survey going out sometime between now and May. And hopefully we'll be able to complete our revised plan by the state deadline due date in August. Share that with you when I come to, to, uh, talk to you again in September.
Wait. What are you taking in terms of books, CDs, and DVD donations?
Um. Pretty much anything, if the books are not particularly current, you know, somebody's cleaning out Grandma's garage or attic or something. We pass those to our surplus partner, Discover Books. Um, if they're current ones, you know, current bestsellers or things that we would wanna put on the shelves, we'd, we do that. But we take everything. We have a lot of your CDs circulating that you donated to us, and we very much appreciate it then. There's never enough money go, to go around, and you had awesome titles, all popular authors, they were great.
That's advantages of normal MPS.
Yeah, I go too, but usually there's not enough of us to carry, but so much. I drag my husband most of the time, he gets to be my sherpa for my, uh, my stuff I buy.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kay.
County attorney report?
No report.
Okay, county administrator report?
I am pleased to report, I have no report.
I'm pleased to have that report. Board comment?
I do have something. The budget for Central Dune Regional Ba- Jail was passed, uh, this past Thursday. And, uh, roof replacement is getting done, that was originally budgeted to be a million dollars. Is getting done for no more than four hundred and twenty-five thousand.
That an actual bid, or is that?
Yes, that is a, yes, it's, uh, at this point it is, should be a signed contract. I was actually three eighty-seven, but putting in some contingencies and extended warranty and everything, we authorized up to four, four twenty-five. Also, uh, when the county administrators had their meeting, uh, on the budget, they requested that next year we start a, um. Construction fund. And with the savings on personnel costs this year at the jail. And the reduced cost of the, uh, roof, personnel savings were applied for the cost of the roof. And we put a million dollars into the construction fund as of last week.
I- i- is that for contemplated new construction, or is it more of a maintenance line, or, or any, any or all of the?
Any and all of the above, but for future, when needed, expansion.
Right, uh, Mr. Crozier, uh, is correct, and we appreciate the authority when the county administrators, and I think, uh, well, Glenda was with me that day. Um, yeah, I, I felt it important and, and others, when we talked it through. For the authority to start putting some money away for the next expansion, not for construction, because it, what, the days of us. As an authority is saving cash to build it like the last time are probably gone. And so there'll be a financing, but we felt it was important to build up a project development fund is really what it is. So that the authority then could go and get preliminary engineering and start going through the design process. Without having to go back to each one of the member localities to ask for planning money. And so that, really, this is a, a seed process of, of them at the point that we would have to contemplate any expansion.
And there's actually a lot of good improvements, uh. DOJ, uh. Inmates are up to about ninety, there's a, um, actual contract coming down from them. Lot of ver- very positive things, and as it was brought up at the last meeting. The change in attitude and operations and accounting and everything else. That has occurred since Superintendent Dwyer took over, and Mrs. Miller has stayed on, uh, has been phenomenal. And, uh. It's extremely nice to see that, uh, the authority is operating in a, um. Very prudent manner.
Do we have any understanding of how many, uh, people are residing there because they can't afford bail?
Yes, and, uh, it, it is, it's shrinking the number. There's, uh, also Neil Goodlow, uh. Will give you a, an in-depth look into anything that he does. And, uh, is doing a lot of research, uh, starting with recidivism at both the, uh. Albemarle, uh, regional jail, uh, as well as ours, and looking at ways to reduce. Bed, you know, bed days, uh, for the jurisdictions and everything. And bringing a lot of really good information and ways to reduce, uh, people staying there. Including the, um, home incarceration, uh, which actually. The individual ends up paying for all that in the long run, so it's not any additional cost, it's a cost savings for the authority. Uh, there have been tremendous amount of, uh, very positive changes, I think, uh. Brian can attest that, uh, the entire atmosphere there is totally different, totally different.
Will be on the December surprise that we had.
Yes, yes, that's.
Uh, just been glad to hear that we're actually getting rid of the, uh, uh, reducing the number of people who can't afford bail.
Yes, and, and. We're, working with the Commonwealth's Attorney's Office, and hopefully we can reduce the number of people that stay there as well.
Okay.
Okay, any other board comment? Any questions on the information items, there are a lot of light reading in the information items today. Okay, appointments of boards and committees, commissions and committees, uh. I actually have one, uh, for the, uh. Parks and Rec Foundation Board, I'd like to appoint Stacy Burleson. So she's probably familiar to many of you, she's been ba- active with our youth council and youth groups for many, many years. And has agreed to serve on that foundation board. Any other appointments? Allison, I'll get you her information.
Okay.
I, I would second that if we need to take her official vote on it.
Well, just unless there are others. All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
All right, calendar items, so we have, uh, two public hearings to schedule. For April tenth, one on a tower and one on a, a, um. Accessory apartment change to the zoning ordinance, is okay with everybody?
Yep.
I need a motion for that, or just?
Still moved.
Okay, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right.
For future reference ahead and out of work.
Yeah, okay.
And just quick comment on the, the tower one, uh, I know everybody tries to make it out, uh, to the different sites. But I would recommend you definitely go to this one, uh, there's, through the Planning Commission, there was not necessarily. A problem with a tower locating on the property, but the particular location was a point of contention. And I'm sure that will come forth to our hearing as well.
I'm certain of it, it, that happens to be in my district, and I have had, have been contacted already by a few people. It, it's a matter of sitting back from the road, some additional things, so. Okay, uh, at that point, we will recess.
Close session.
Chairman, I think what we'll do. Yeah, why don't we do a close session?
Okay, all right.
And then from there, we can adjourn to the dinner and come back.
Recess to the dinner.
And then reset, and then we'll do the coming out closed when we come back.
Okay.
Is that all right?
Yeah, as long as you don't talk about any county business at the dinner. Yes.
No, sir.
Not likely.
All right. Whereas. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Orange County desires to discuss in closed meeting the following matters. Discussion of consideration, uh, interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries. Disciplining resignation of specific public employees. Discussion of the disposition of publicly held real property where an offer has been made on such property, where discussion in open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Discussion of consideration investment of public funds where competition or bargaining is involved, where if made public initially, the financial interest of the government unit could be adversely affected. Consultation of legal counsel pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. And consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public bodies regarding specific legal matters requiring revision of legal advice by such counsel. Whereas pursuant to sections two point two thirty seven eleven A one, A three, A six, A seven, and A eight, under the Code of Virginia, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Orange County is hereby authorized discussion of four stated matters in closed meeting, need that as a motion.
Uh huh.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Members of the board, to the best of your knowledge, were the only matters discussed in the closed meeting. Public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements. And that only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened. Were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting. Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
And Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Okay. We will reconvene our regular meeting. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment, that's the next item on our agenda, we're a minute early, but if we know someone that's, that's ready.
Yes, we have one speaker for public comment, Mr. Jay Billy, one two two five six Monford Road.
Okay, if you don't mind being early, you may.
I don't mind, as long as I can take this minute.
It's your minute.
Thank you, uh, good evening, my name is Jay Billy, owner and operator of the inn at Westwood Farm over in Orange at one two two five six Monford Road. And, and, um, not far from Montpelier. I'm here tonight to request that the Board of Supervisors begin the process of starting a registry. Of the short-term lodging facilities in Orange County as allowed by the bill passed in the Commonwealth last year. According to the statute fifteen dash two dash, fifteen dot dash two dash, uh, nine eight three. You are empowered to have lodging units advertised on Airbnb, VRBO, and the like. Register with the county and collect transient occupancy taxes. Uh, as if this they, this hasn't happened, the law also gives you the power of fining. Uh, each non-registered unit five hundred dollars if they fail to do so. The town of Orange has already completed this step, and I urge the county to follow suit, not only for consistency purposes. But rather to collect the monies due that are just falling through the cracks. In a presentation that I made to the Planning Commission, I laid out calculations that the county is losing approximately thirty to forty thousand dollars a year. In unpaid taxes, and these taxes I think should be collected. By not doing so, it's like folding a winning hand of four aces in a poker hand. I'm not asking Orange County to reinvent the wheel, Albemarle County has gone through this process by starting a registry, as well as some other counties in the area. They've also had several public comment sessions, uh, to solicit how short-term lodging could be handled. As a result of getting feedback from the citizens and how short-term la- lodging could affect their neighborhoods and rural areas. They now have a set of operational guidelines, which include registering with the Department of Health, a building inspection, and a fire marshal inspection. I would prefer that inspections be conducted on these facilities, currently they are operating under the tax radar, under the regulatory radar. And under any safety guidelines at all. Collectively, they outnumber the total number of rooms in all the established lodging facilities. And it's time to start getting them on the record and paying taxes. Thank you.
Aye, thank you.
Repeat the law.
Fifteen two, uh, dash nine eighty-three?
Dash nine eight three.
No further speakers, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, next on our, our agenda is public hearing, proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance, ZTA eighteen oh one.
There's the one.
Yeah, I, I think I have it. Fifteen two, nine eighty-three. Are you leaving this with me? Okay, Mr. Fred.
Yes, sir, gentlemen, your public hearing this evening is a text amendment to the zoning ordinance. Uh, outlines a couple of different changes with regards to microbreweries and micro-distilleries. Um, in your packet, I provided a memo that gives a better overview of what this amendment accomplishes. It also includes the Planning Commission resolution, um, recommending approval. They held their public hearing on this a few weeks ago, there were no speakers at the public hearing. Um, two people did express comments via email prior to that hearing. And the commission ultimately. Two people did express comments via email prior to that hearing, and the commission ultimately unanimously recommended approval to you. And I will just briefly recap what this amendment does. With regards to farm wineries, farm breweries, and farm distilleries, it basically aligns our zoning ordinance with state code requirements. Outside of those changes, it creates new definitions for microbrewery and micro distillery, adds those to section seventy dash one. Adds those as permissible special uses in the ag district. Adds them as permitted uses in C one and C two, which are our commercial districts. With the slight caveat in C one, there's a performance criteria for that use. And I will also note, you've probably noticed that we're removing cluster housing development from the special uses. Again, that's just to align with state code. State code says explicitly that we can't require special approvals for cluster housing, so we included that just as a minor housekeeping item. I'll stop there, happy to entertain any questions.
The only question I had, and I found the language a little bit cumbersome. The state has distinguished between, in its definition of agriculture, something that, and it looks like the term they're using, limited, and then parenthetically, I E. farm breweries, and also distilleries. Is that, is that the actual language? They're just saying it's a, it's a limited brewery?
So the, the term limited is taken from the ABC laws in some regard. The term is basically, in this context, synonymous with farm. I added that in there just for clarification purposes.
Because they have a, they have a very specific definition and requirements in terms of the farm breweries and/or distilleries, in terms of products and the like, okay. So that's meant to just reflect those items that are defined by the state code as a by right uses within certain districts.
Right.
Okay, all right. So it could be limited, it could be farm, or it could be I E. farm, as distinct between the ones we're talking about tonight. Okay. Anybody have any other questions for Josh? Okay. We'll open the public hearing. Do we have speakers?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we currently have seven speakers. The first is Dan Holmes, representative of PEC.
Okay, Dan?
Hi, my name is Dan Holmes, I'm here on behalf of the Piedmont Environmental Council. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to address the board tonight and speak to the proposed amendment before you. I'd like to start asking a question of what is a farm brewery, what is a farm distillery? The name seems to apply a tie to farming. The common sense read of the code makes clear that the General Assembly included farm in the title is because there's a nexus between the actual farming activity and the use. The growing of goods that would be included in a finished product of a farm brewery or distillery. Otherwise, the state would not allow those businesses to operate. So this brings me to my second question. The code requires a nexus in order to allow these types of businesses to operate. Why wouldn't we not include this in our definition or as a part of the listing under special uses under ag? Orange County prides itself on an agricultural history and recognizes it as a leading industry. And it is with pride that we should not just recognize the Virginia code, but strongly promote its ties between farm and these associated businesses. Otherwise, we are demonstrating we care more about the brewery or distillery than the farm or agricultural landscape in which it resides, and also makes this business possible. Let's not kid ourselves, it is the agricultural setting that makes these types of businesses possible. It is why people come to our county. Otherwise, we would just grab a beer at the strip mall and ignore agritourism altogether. In closing, I'd just like to ask that you please consider making there be a reasonable tie to the farm, meaning the growing of products grown on the farm be included in the finished product of these types of businesses. And I, again, appreciate the inclusion of this as a special use, and I do understand that gives you the right to place conditions on these types of businesses as you're considering the proposal. But I also think that this is an agricultural county, and this is a part of agritourism. And if we're gonna call it agritourism and promote it as such, it should have a tie to the farm. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Stephen Brooks, resident of Somerset.
Good evening, gentlemen, thank you for the opportunity to speak. The proposed amendment put forward by the county staff further expands the already long and questionable use list of commercial uses that may be permitted on agricultural land via special use permit. BOS should refuse to adopt the proposed amendment. In fact, the board should undertake a review of the grab bag of commercial and industrial uses and eliminate all of those obviously incompatible with agriculture. Section seventy dash three oh one of the code, Orange County Code adopted in two thousand sixteen states clearly that the intent of agricultural zoning is to protect agriculture from incompatible uses and to discourage the random scattering of commercial and industrial uses, I'm quoting. Hard to be clearer, but after the ordinance lists fifteen permitted uses, most of which can be viewed as more or less what most of us would understand as agriculture, it proceeds to enumerate twenty-five further uses allowed by special use permit. A quick review of the list is enough to see that virtually every specially permitted use directly contradicts the stated intent of agricultural zoning, as quoted above, to discourage the random scattering of commercial use. How does a special use permit magically make a quarry, or a commercial recreation facility, or a public garage, or a trailer park, or a four thousand square foot retail store, or agricultural equipment sales compatible with agriculture? Well, of course, the supervisors don't have magic wands. What they do have, under the special use permit section and its laundry list, is a very personal discretionary zoning ordinance within the public zoning ordinance. With just three votes, the board can turn the meaning of agricultural use upside down. The words mean, in effect, what the board says they mean. In the real world, this is called spot zoning. It's long been viewed as an illegitimate approach to land use planning. Orange County has at least three substantial commercial centers, as well as corridors on Route twenty, fifteen, and thirty-three, where businesses are appropriately concentrated. The businesses there are on commercially zoned property. At some point, the sites were purchased as commercial property and priced accordingly. The land is on the county tax rolls at commercial, not agricultural rates. What's the county's message to business owners who've played fairly by the zoning ordinance and paid up to locate in commercial districts? The message seems to be that they should have sought a special use permit and saved themselves a great deal of money. And to owners of commercial real estate in Gordonsville, Barbersville, and Orange, particularly those with vacant properties, what's the county saying? Why isn't the county more interested in encouraging the prosperity of its small downtown businesses and the value of commercial real estate than it is in scattering commercial uses randomly in agricultural districts? How does spot zoning help the businesses of Orange County? Is this what the board means by business friendly? Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Mr. Chairman, is Charles Stick, president of Waverly Farm.
Good evening, my name is Charles Stick, I live at Waverly Farm in Somerset. I would like to lend my agreement and support to the two previous speakers in terms of this objection to this amendment. I greatly appreciate your time and considering our thoughts on this this evening. I, I feel as though this mix of commercial and agricultural use that is being considered is a very slippery slope for the people of this county, and I find it to be very dangerous. I don't want to live next to a discotheque or a nightclub that once was called a brewery or a distillery. And I'd like to propose somehow that these things have great precedent, and we have this precedent already in our county, and we've had difficulty with it. And I think the people who are neighbors of a similar situation would suggest that this has not been a very encouraging atmosphere to live in. I would love it if we could all gather a fund together for each of you to go and travel to places that would allow you to see where these things have been done well, with grace and dignity, and consideration for everybody. I don't see how mixing this commercial and agricultural use is consistent with preserving the special nature of this beautiful place in which we live. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Charlotte Teaken, resident of Waverly Farm.
I have nothing more to say than what the previous, I agree with the previous three speakers, I don't need to waste your time.
Okay, thank you.
Next speaker is Jasmine Warren, five two nine zero Ridge Road.
Good evening, Jasmine Warren. Here we are then. Many of us who live on farms in Orange County were disappointed to learn that, once again, our county government staff is proposing to make it easier for commercial businesses to operate in ag-zoned areas. Now the staff proposes that commercial beverage companies be allowed to run breweries and distilleries in our ag areas. They propose that these companies can operate their businesses without any connection to the land, even though they will locate in farming areas on land zoned agricultural. They say that you, the supervisors, need to change the ordinance to allow these beverage companies in ag areas because that is where the best views are, which they need to attract the wedding and party business. But what do party venue businesses have to do with ag zoned land? There are great views in some residential areas of the county too. So why not amend the ordinance to allow breweries and distilleries masquerading as party venues to operate on residential zoned land too? No, you would probably say we shouldn't do that, because people live in those areas and don't want the noise, traffic, and hassle from the wedding parties most weekends of the year. Well, there are a lot of us who live in ag zoned lands who feel the same way. Don't the tax-paying Orange County agricultural residents have the same rights as those in residential areas to enjoy their property? Would any of you choose to live next to an event business? A brewery or a party venture is a commercial business, they belong in commercial areas, not in ag areas, any more than in residential areas. Please support these commercial businesses in commercial areas, but do not extend them to our agricultural areas. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Virginia Donaldson.
I also agree with all the previous speakers, and I will also not waste your time.
Okay, thank you.
And the last speaker is Mark Warren, five two nine zero Ridge Road.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. There is some confusion, I think, by the proponents of this proposal as to what it is. I would like to clarify that what this proposal is, is a proposal to allow commercial beverage companies to run wedding party businesses in ag areas where they cannot do so today. The proponents say that, no, no, breweries and distilleries already may operate by right, and this amendment actually protects the rural areas by requiring a special use permit. This argument, gentlemen, is just simply not true. The only by right brewery or distillery now allowed on ag land is a farm brewery or distillery, and the word farm is key. In order to operate, the brewer or distiller must be a farmer producing some of the hops or grains used in a beer or whiskey. The present ordinance makes sense. It says ag zoned areas are for farm uses, and if a farmer growing hops or grains wants to use his crop to make and sell beer or whiskey, he should be allowed to do so, and he is. But the proposed amendment drops the requirement that a brewer must grow his own ingredients. If you vote to adopt the amendment, anybody who wants to operate a beer party barn for fraternities or a whiskey disco for wedding bashes in agricultural areas will have the right to do so with an SUP. The result of passing this amendment will be to develop our now quiet, peaceful ag areas into commercial venues, filling our rural roads with traffic, replacing bucolic pastures with big lighted parking lots, and filling the air with amplified party music. Don't take my word for it, go look at Route fifty-one in Nelson County. That's what this proposal is based on, that's what the Planning Director and the Director of Economic Development want. Anybody in any doubt about this proposal should drive just over the Abmaral border on Route one fifty-one on the way to Wintergreen and see it. A rural area that was once full of productive farms and scenic vistas is now sprawling development of bars, breweries, and traffic. Our county economic development director says that, right now, there are two beverage companies just waiting to open breweries and distilleries in Orange County. But they can't start their operations without a change in our ordinance. He says if you approve this ordinance, these beverage companies will come because they want to, quote, "operate party venue businesses in our beautiful rural view sheds." That's his quote. Even worse, once these two commercial developments arrive, Mr. Gere predicts that many more will join them. We don't have any beer or whiskey party barns now, under the present ordinance, but we will have plenty of them in our rural areas if you approve this amendment. Why not direct these beverage companies to our many available commercial properties? The empty Stonefire Station or vacant land in the Barbersville Design District would be perfect spots for a brewery. Maybe the old Virginia National Bank Building across the street. We have many great potential locations in areas already zoned commercial without destroying our areas zoned ag. Please don't commercialize our rural areas, please vote against this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you.
No further speakers.
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Okay, gentlemen? Questions for Josh or otherwise?
Josh, can you give us a rundown from your perspective on how this change would affect? Would it make it easier? Would it make it harder? Would it be neutral for someone to get one of these establishments going?
We're referring to farm breweries?
I'm asking you as the zoning administrator, how's that, you know, how would you rate it?
Well, I will start by saying, right now, the only way to operate a brewery is to operate a farm brewery. So if you don't want to fall under the guidelines of the farm and the other criteria established in state code, then basically the answer is no. If anybody doesn't want to operate under those and they apply for the special use, then we have to look at the comprehensive plan at that point. That's where really your, your, your all's diligent adherence to the comprehensive plan really comes into play, because if one of these were to be proposed in the A one Future Land Use District, for example, that one strictly says little to no development should occur there. My recommendation would be to deny that, so that sort of application. Now conversely, if one of these was proposed in a village area where we specifically encourage commercial growth and development, that would be an easy recommendation, subject to certain conditions. So to answer your question, depending on where it's proposed, yes and no?
You should run for office. Currently, if, if they want to, currently, they can do it by right in the ag zone as long as they are raising some part of the ingredients on the, on the property.
Right.
Now, is that, is that laid out in state code? Is that, that's a requirement of state code? So Orange County doesn't have any, we can't stop that or keep that from happening?
Correct.
We, we actually could restrict it somewhat. State code doesn't give that, state code does allow some restrictions on, we don't have any, but there are. State code does give you some. don't have any, but there are, state code does give you some small ability to regulate farm breweries. We, we just don't.
To, to regulate it, but not actually keep it from happening, is that right?
You can't keep it from happening, but you can put some regulations.
Put conditions on.
You can't put some conditions on a farm brewery. Uh, it says local restrictions, uh, shall be reasonable and take into account the econet- economic impact on the brewery. So we could have by state code reasonable conditions on a farm brewery if we wanted to.
Determine by the courts. Yeah, eventually.
Well, I mean, determine, reasonable would, i- as is all zoning law, as long as it's a fairly debatable test, I mean, we, as long as we have a fairly debatable reason as to why we have a reasonable restriction on it.
We have, we have to have a good reason for any restrictions we put on them.
Right.
And we can't, and we can't tell them they just can't do it because we don't want them.
Right. And you can't put, and there's a limitation, for example, if you put noise restrictions, they can't be any stricter than your noise ordinance if you have one, which we don't. So since we don't have a noise ordinance, we couldn't put noise restrictions, for example.
Okay, Josh, currently if someone wants to do a, a, uh, a micro brewery or a micro distillery, uh, and they don't want to have it fit under the, the agricultural use that we're describing, what would the process be for them then? What would they have to? Would they have to locate on commercial property? Where, where, what would they, if they wanted to do it in Orange County, but they hadn't identified a property, what would you tell them?
Uh, well, depending on the, as this was drafted and recommended by the Planning Commission, depending on the zoning district, if we're talking agricultural, uh, it's a matter of applying for a special use permit.
So if they were in agricultural, they could still apply for a special use permit?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, in C-one or C-two, it's a matter of getting site plan approval, so, um...
So they're essentially by right in C-one and C-two?
Yes.
Now according, according to this, with, with this, uh, uh, ordinance change, they don't have to have the nexus between the, uh, the distillery and, uh, and locally grown, uh, products?
They do if they want to be by right.
Okay, but this g- this allows them to do it without having, uh, a nexus with a special use permit?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, but there is a requirement in the state code that says they, there, there, there has to be a connection, right?
No, the by right use has to be a connection. If we adopt this, then the, the, because if you notice the definition, and think, I think somebody already asked about it, it says micro brewery means a brewery other than a limited or farm brewery, which is where the restrictions are. So i- if we, if we create a separate class of micro distilleries or micro breweries, we could require that in the, in the SUP, but we, they could, we could just as easily not require it in the SUP. It would, it would be our discretion, it'd be during the SUP process, you would decide whether it needed to be locally grown or, or not.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, one, one question, I, I was looking at the state code. The state code for farm breweries doesn't specify the proportion of the product that has to be grown on the property, so my understanding, so if somebody represents to us that they grow one percent of the finished product on it, then that would qualify as a farm brewery?
Technically, subject to ABC.
Regulation.
Right.
So there's no, there's no, you know, whether it's a, you know, a hundred by a hundred foot acre, a hundred foot by a hundred foot plot of wheat, and if that went into the product, then that would qualify as a farm brewery.
It, it's a little more complex than that. It says the licensed premises should be limited to the portion of the farm on which the agricultural products are grown. So if you grow this much pops and then use the, but you, then you can only have your farm brewery on this much land. So your farm brewery can only be on the land that's growing the crop. So, does that make sense? So that's, there's no proportional test, but you can only have your farm brewery on land that's used for crop production. So it's either crop production or your brewery and that, and that's the only land you can use.
Does the state code limit the, uh, production capacity on the farm brew- uh, breweries at all, or is it?
It's fifty, it's fifteen thousand barrels.
That, that's, I, I thought I recall that, the, so the fifteen thousand we're using as the maximum production in the case of the micro brewery, uh, is sized the same as the farm brewery. The only difference then is the production requirement, is that what we're, is that what we're trying to present? Okay. I, I, I'm also concerned about the, the point Josh made to, uh, Mark's question. You know, the comprehensive plan at least, even though our zoning ordinance doesn't, comprehensive plan at least acknowledges different, uh, land uses throughout the county, uh, even within zoning districts. Uh, the A-one versus the A-two and the village distinction and those kind of things. And I, uh, I, I'm just wondering if, if this consideration doesn't need to either explicitly or at least i- in, in a more direct manner, uh, acknowledge the comprehensive plan and the intent and guidance that are, that exist there. Uh, I, I tend to agree that, uh, we, we've pretty carefully defined the A-one, uh, areas of the county, uh, and it seems to me that it would be a, uh, an unlikely fit, let me put it that way, that one, that a micro brewery or micro distillery as defined here, uh, would be compatible with our description and purpose and goals for the, the A-one area certainly. Uh, a village area which could be zoned anything, uh, I, I think potentially with the right conditions could, could be a, a home for one of these, uh, kind of things. And I, I'm not sure that in our, i- in the way this proposed language is currently structured that we, we would, we are clearly communicating to a potential, uh, builder of one of these, uh, the, the importance we would want to place on the comprehensive plan and the distinction. And I, and I know there's a problem because we're, we're treading between comprehensive plan and zoning language and, and that, and that's not an easy path to walk, but, um, I think clearly in this county, we want and there is currently in the comprehensive plan, a clear distinction of, among, uh, various land uses. And this seems to, to be, you know, encroaching i- in, into some of those distinctions. I, I don't have a fix, I just have a, a problem.
You can use your comprehensive plan to deny an SUP. So if an SUP comes in in an A-one area, you, and, and, we'd be on a rock-solid ground to deny it because of the A-one.
Should we not announce that that's a condition?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I, I think we don't do anybody any favors by, by putting something out there that makes somebody think that they could get this approved and then we say, well, no, it's dead on arrival, so.
Right, that, that, that's sort of where I'm headed.
And I believe that's what we heard this evening is there's not necessarily a desire to keep these out of the county, but definitely not in the A-one district, uh, to me is what, what I heard. And, uh, I know at some point we're going to have to address the, the different zoning and...
Right.
I, I, had it, had we gotten to that point already, I think this would be a whole lot simpler, uh, yet, yet County Attorney does make a good point.
Well, but I, 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 I think we, it's, this is a problem that i- i- as one of our speakers, uh, correctly pointed out tonight, this is, this is a problem that we have, uh, with any number of uses in the special permit use list, not, not just breweries and distilleries. I mean, I, I, I see elder care facilities and any, any number of things there that at least for A-one, uh, and our intent for A-one seemed to be no more compatible than, than, than one of these proposed breweries or distilleries. And so, uh, I, I, I guess I have a question. Is there a way to, within the ordinance, within the zoning ordinance, to alert at least, if not absolutely, define, uh, the, the connection with the, and the restrictions imposed by the comprehensive plan?
I would say we, so there's a, you have to remember, there's another piece to this. There's a, the screening of applications that we do as staff before anything actually gets on your radar. Um, I, I would refer you to section seventy dash one forty-one of the zoning ordinance. It lays out the considerations that the board and the Planning Commission shall consider when looking at a special use permit request. The first of those is the comprehensive plan. The other ones are the, um, the typical state code, uh, verbiage that you see frequently, whether, you know, it would threaten the public health, safety, and welfare, whether it'd be compatible with its surroundings, whether it would impact any environment or natural scenic historic features, and perhaps most importantly to some of the people in this room, whether it would result in substantial detriment to the surrounding property. So those are all things that you all have to consider. So there's a, there's an element of review that goes into special use permits. It's not just a matter of looking at the use itself, it's the use itself within these guidelines and criteria.
But back to Mark's point of, uh, of somebody might not go looking at all the other parts of the, uh, of the zoning ordinance and look at this and say that I'm, I'm okay. And shouldn't we have some indication there that, uh, that A-one, uh, is, is, some element of that is shown up in the, in this part of the ordinance?
Now, I think what we really need, if you take all the comments, um, both from the floor and from the board here, I think what we need is a, a much narrower definition, um, of, of what we're trying to do here. Um, I, I think that's what it really comes down to.
Yeah, I mean, I look at this, at this land use map on the wall behind Mr. David there and the, uh, even from here, I can see a color distinction. The, the darker green colors are really the, those are the A-one areas and, and, and we all have a vision of what those areas are like and, and I think they're, uh, we, we need to continue to take steps to not only protect those, but say to the world, we're going to protect them. And, and I think that's a, we have to meet that test, certainly as we add to the list of uses, uh, at some point, you know, our, our plates overflow all the time, but at some point we should, you know, look at that list and see if there aren't things other than breweries and distilleries that are questionable.
The point is, the, uh, the, uh, the zoning ordinance compatible or consistent with the COF plan in terms of the difference between A-one and A-two.
Yeah, it, they never align up perfectly, I suppose, but we're, we're, we're a little out of phase, I think.
We just have one agricultural, we don't have, we don't have two areas, although we have tried to in a COF plan to find something that's, uh, more protected than the other.
Yeah, I, I actually think the COF plan is more, more reflective of the current thinking than the zoning ordinance is.
Yes.
Uh, but it was redone four, five years ago, so this, some of this stuff has been around since the zoning ordinance was written initially in the sixties or whatever it was.
If you, uh, I, I think I'm hearing the, the leanings of a few board members here, you might want to consider adding some conditions to these definitions. Um, they are purposefully narrow in their scope, but you can certainly make them more narrow.
Are you suggesting we, for example, that the micro brewery with the, the line nineteen in the version I have, that, that in that definition we could say, uh, you know, that, that it could, could exist, uh, that it could not exist, I guess I should say, in, in the A-one area? Could we use not literally that language, but that, that notion?
Yeah, I would probably word it such that it's, you know, not permitted in areas designated for conservation. Um, I have a feeling the, as you all know, the Planning Commission's currently about to consider, uh, you know, their review of the COF plan and they've all indicated that land use is a section they want to look at, so there's a chance they might reword some of those future land use categories, add some, change them. Um, so I, I would make it more general like that, but I think that would be doable.
They're looking at the, at looking at the land, the COF land land use as opposed to trying to bring these zoning ordinance in compliance with the existing land use? The, the existing COF land?
I think they want to do both, but I think they want the board's blessing before they take that task on.
Well, we haven't, there, there's a required review of the COF plan coming up and so that might be an opportunity to, uh, to, to address some of these, uh...
In fact, they were just notified last meeting.
I, I guess I asked the County Attorney, is, is a, a language addition like that within, uh, our authority?
I, I think we could come up with some restrictive language. We, I'd have to work with Josh on it. And maybe we put some restrictive language means a brewery other than a limited farm brewery. Maybe we add some language that has some percentage of locally grown that, that will be part of the SUP process and is going to be in a non-conservation area, I mean, where we put some language to make it clear that, that we're still going to have some strictures on, on what we allow.
Well, I'm, I'm a little less concerned about the farm grown piece, uh, only because these could go on commercial, commercially zoned property or in a village, a village setting, a village outside the A-one. By definition, a village is outside the A-one. So I'm, I'm more concerned about the, uh, the A-one matter than the production piece. There, there, there is a definition for the one that, a farm, and it's the same size. That's why I asked the question. The, the farm brewery could do fifteen thousand, this can do fifteen thousand. So the only dis- distinction is growing the, the, uh, materials.
I, I think I might, um, suggest, you know, limiting in the certain areas as directed by the COF plan might be one, uh, a condition you might want to consider, um, special setback requirements, and we've used that, I think, successfully with other uses, um, and perhaps some special restrictions on outdoor events, live music, things like that. I think that would address the, the comments that we've heard tonight.
Um, let me, Mr. Chairman, if I could, looking at the state code enabling legislation, it makes no distinction between whether it's A-one or A-two, it just says agricultural lands.
Right.
And so, uh, I'm asking, I mean, if, if, that, if, if...
That's my concern. But that's for farm, I think, but...
For a farm brewery, so what that means is if you had a micro distillery in the list and say, these are only, you know, directed toward, consistent with the COF plan in A-two, that would not preclude somebody from actually doing a bona fide farm brewery in an A-one zone?
Well, yeah, it wouldn't, I mean, we have to remember, we have, we have subdivisions that are ag-zoned, there, this would allow people in their two-acre ag zone, if they could grow an acre worth of po- barley or hops, they could technically run a farm brewery in, in their neighborhood.
Right.
Because of, of the state.
The state makes no distinction.
That would be the state requirement.
State requirements, it kind of ties our hands, yeah.
The state makes no distinction between A-one and two, it just says agricultural.
They just say agricultural. And so even if we had two zoning categories of agriculture, we'd still be stuck in the same.
No, no, if you had two, if, if we tomorrow, I realize we have an advertiser, tonight, on our agenda, we split the A-one and the A-two into two zoning districts, we could have it per SUP in A-two and no right at all in A-one, that you can't do it. So i- if the A-one and the A-two were currently two separate zoning districts, we could then have it as a SUP use in the A-two and not listed at all as a use in the A-one.
So the only thing you could do in the A-one is, is what you could currently do.
Right.
But they would still be able to do that because that's coming from the state.
They could, they could still do the farm brewery because that comes from the state.
And that's about right.
I guess the question is, you know, absent the, the creation of those two zoning districts, which we can't do tonight, is there a way to, uh, get the protection that we're looking for in A-one and yet in, in a, in a place where it's acceptable such as a village, uh, you know, allow the, uh, the non-farm or the micro? I mean, is that? It, it seems to me a minimum that we, we, we need to work through that and see if there is a way to fix it that makes sense and, uh, it could, because I, I do not think that we're, we're trying to, uh, put in place a, a, an ordinance that would allow these essentially anywhere in the county. I mean, that's not what we're attempting to do here. We want, but we want to make certain that we are in fact doing that. Uh, I, I agree with Josh, there, there are tools available to us in, in the SUP process, but I'm, but I'm also, I, I think it's important that we communicate to all those stakeholders, uh, including a potential developer of one of these, that, what the expectations are.
Is it, it, Tom, is any problem with removing the seventy-three oh three, uh, for the time being, uh, and, and passing the rest of it?
Revisiting the...
You mean line sixty-two, the, the, the addition of the micro brewery into that list?
Yeah, you could, you could...
Well, yeah, I mean, that's only change, but in the words, yeah, so limited to the, I, I assume we need the definition, change needs to be made and then go to, and then improve the C-one and the C-two.
Well, if, you could leave it... Well, you could leave your definition as if it is, if you're only going to allow it in the commercial anyway. So you could just strike line sixty-two for now, approve the definitions, approve fit for C one, C two, and then.
Would we have to go through the entire process again?
Oh, to to add, to add it back to the ag you would, yes.
But I I I I I mean, I don't think we're going to get there quickly. I think it's going to take a process, I don't really think re-advertising is a problem.
Okay.
And also, Mr. Chairman, just for the record, I believe Josh was already down here, but Mr. Will Banks sent an email just wanting to convey to the board, basically under the public hearing, that he is against the present.
Okay.
Presentation.
Well, let's see if we can come to some agreement on the on the next step. I I I I think we need to further develop the guidance with respect to land use, at least, maybe other restrictions in terms of music and parties and hours, I, you know, whatever the list needs to be for particular areas, so.
Well, I mean, one of the things, Jim, is I I agree with with you and and one of the speakers, that there's, you know, we've got, there's twenty-five, well, twenty, twenty-three, if you take out twenty-one and twenty-five. You know, there's a whole lot of stuff on there, and probably we ought to go ahead and look at that while we're looking at.
Well, that's the other possibility, is we could, as county attorney said, we could leave the definitions and we could do the approval for C one, C two, and then take on the the broader task with respect to the list of permitted uses for ag. And at that time, include a land use differentiation of some fashion. I mean, that's another way of going about it, I think.
I might suggest, you might want to consider a deferral tonight. I don't think there's anything pressing in this ordinance that can't wait until you all come to a more of an agreement. And we can tackle this super long SUP list, which I fully agree with, we need to pare down as a separate text amendment. That way, so it doesn't get cloudied in the the microbrewery discussion.
And there may be other items that that are land use.
Yeah, but I think if we're going to.
Dependent.
Well, I would just say if we're going to, you know, it's kind of the the chicken or the egg here, I I think I I think we need to to tackle seventy three oh three separately and all at once. Not 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 add, not lessen restrictions in it based on, well, then we're going to go back and put some, we're going to cut some stuff out of it. I I just, I don't think that's a very good way to.
Because we could, I mean, we could change something with regard to the microbrewery by just changing that, but if we wanted to leave the rest of it, we need to go through the public, whole public hearing process.
Yeah.
Well, I I agree, I mean, I, every time I read that list, I I I have to shake my head and say, what in the world?
How did we get there?
Are we, yeah, I mean, I, it'd be interesting to see when that original list was created, but I I probably still had hair at that point.
Well, when when all this was created, that map was all green.
Right.
Except the town of Orange and Gordonville.
Do I, do I hear a motion that we defer or just take no action? We can certainly do that.
Well, what is the, what is the heartburn with approving the the C one and the C two?
We can do that.
And the and the definitions?
I I I think those are the two options, we defer it all or we take action on those parts.
Well, I mean, I I I know that there, you know, there may well be somebody out there on on looking at some C one and C two properties, so.
It's possible.
I mean, where where we can go ahead and 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 sort of put that to bed, I don't know why we wouldn't want to do that.
Well, it's a move.
So your your motion is we do everything, but we delete line sixty-two?
Delete the microbrewery, micro distillery under the agricultural.
Okay.
So delete sign, line sixty-two in the proposed order.
Right, okay, is there a second?
Line sixty-two in the proposed order. That's, so that's number twenty-five on this list that I have here.
Yes.
So I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
We need a, need a roll call.
I need, okay. Oh, that's right, we did, we did the ordinance piece, sorry, roll call, please.
Mr. Vrain?
Aye.
Mr. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Crozier?
Aye.
Mr. Goodwin?
Aye.
Mr. White?
Aye.
Okay.
More work.
Yeah, Mr. Frederick, I guess you would, you you heard the conversation, and we will hear from you in the near future.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a, may I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Maybe a solution that's shouldn't be politically difficult is to we create a secret, ask the planning commission to begin the process, and we create a mirror to the current ag district, and we have two mirror districts called A one and A two, delineate the differences, but actually start out with them being identical, that nobody, you're not taking any rights away from anybody, all you're doing is creating two districts that are mirror images of each other. Then we can tackle the A one at a different pace from the A two.
I I like your suggestion, however, having been through two attempts at doing something similar to that and learning that instead of having general lines, you end up having to do it by parcel boundaries. So all of a sudden, we're into a, you you, we would be having this conversation most likely years from now if we do that, because you have to, you'll have to go through and parcel by parcel decide.
Where 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 A one and A two?
Which side of the line is it on, and if it happens to split, then you have to make that decision. So it, I I'm not saying it isn't an important thing to do, but it is a, it's a very different task.
And that and that will generate a lot of interest in terms of whether on an A one or A two.
And it has, the past two attempts to, under different names.
Well, that's why I'm saying if you, but in the beginning, they're mirror images of each other.
But at some point, you have to unmirror them.
You have to unmirror them.
But in terms of a a a zoning ordinance, I have to have a definitive line, not this general thing I've got in the on the COF plan.
Each parcel has a zoning.
That's right.
Therein lies the problem, because the county has one ag zone. But the COF plan says there are really two, and so.
So we actually have to find the dividing line there, because a parcel can't be, you know.
Yeah, and we don't want, we don't want to split zone parcels. We have, we have enough of those already.
Some of this, you can, many of the features are natural features, the center line of a road or center line of a tributary.
You've you've heard the conversation, I think we we're, we we now need a, to develop a plan and a recommendation.
We probably need to talk about that a lot more.
Okay, I need one more motion.